Welcome, everybody. We're just getting ready to get moving here.
That was like half of my lower intestines.
All right, we're just, I'm just getting attendance here real fast. Everybody joins in. All right, give it a minute or two more. Then we'll get started. All right, we may get some more people, but I will get started here. All right. We're starting off on unit two. For those of you in sixth period. My apologies, we, we didn't get a chance to get started in fourth because of the pictures and having a short fourth block. So we'll start from the beginning. And this unit really, a lot of it is about the battle between the states and the federal government, which really is the foundation for how our two parties got started. You know, the Alien and Sedition Acts were this attempt to nullify a federal law. I'm sorry, the Virginia and Kentucky resolutions were the attempts to nullify the Alien and Sedition Acts, which were federal laws that the states didn't agree with. And the Constitution really never said who gets to decide whether a federal law is constitutional or not. So anything that wasn't left to the states, I'm sorry, wasn't left to the federal government was, was supposed to be left to the states. This would culminate in the nullification crisis of the 1830s. Although by that point, the Supreme Court had taken, you know, that issue on. And eventually it will lead to the Civil War. So the whole first part of our nation's history has to do with this, this battle between state governments and the federal governments are over who kind of has the ultimate power. It was, that was again, something that you know, dominated the the earlier form of government, the Articles Confederation. So it looks like Olivia just joined us. Make sure I get her down. All right, so that takes us to the campaign of 1800. John Adams had made some pretty controversial decisions. Most notably, the Alien and Sedition Acts. And so the Federalist Party really was kind of, you know, up against a lot of, you know, public backlash over those issues. The, even though Alexander Hamilton and the quote high federalists who are more purist in their, in their federalist beliefs didn't like Adams all that much, he ended up getting chosen as the party's candidate. And the mudslinging continues. They, he, they basically said that Jefferson would make everyone into sons of ulter. By this point, the French Revolution had taken on a very kind of negative reputation. There's Autumn. And so that basically is going to make it so they have an avenue to attack Jefferson on that, that really resonates. And that's really the avenue of religion. He's not religious enough. He's, he's not a real Christian. He's a deist, you know, that sort of thing. And the the Democratic Republicans had, you know, they, they needed votes in the North. And so Aaron Burr became a critical, he was, he was a lawyer from, from New York. He became a kind of a critical ally of Jefferson in order to ensure that there would be enough Democratic Republican votes in the North. And so when he was able to get control of the New York State Legislature, that ensured that the Democratic Republicans would get the the, the number of seats that they needed to basically send the electors they wanted to send. So it was already starting, party politics was already starting to mess up the whole Electoral College system. Originally, the founders were like, let's send our best people and just trust them to make a good decision. Best people from every state. But now you can see that if, if the Democratic Republican Party had control of the New York State Legislature, they would guarantee that the, the New York State Legislature would send electors because they're the ones who would pick the electors that would vote Democratic Republican. And so they, of course, tried to circulate rumors on Adams. Adams had made the unfortunate suggestion that there should be titles of nobility granted to people. And that, of course, you know, was shot down. And they, they, they are also, he had kind of cozied up to the British. And so they were attacking him and kind of trying to tap into public sentiment about it being the, the anti-British public sentiment. So this takes us to the election of 1800. And it's significant in a couple of ways. And we've discussed this already in, in six block. But this bears repeating here. It's an obvious win for the Democratic Republicans. So for the first time in our, in our history, we're going to have a transition of power. And the question is, what, what, what did everybody say about transitions of power in democracies? Like, what, what did everybody predict was going to happen with our experiment with democracy in the modern world? The first time a, a, a party has to relinquish control and another party is going to take over, what was going to happen supposedly? Yeah, I mean, people like, they're, they're going to be, they're not going to let go of power. They're going to get violent. And they're going to refuse to let go of power and the whole thing is going to fall apart. So one of the most significant things about this election is it is the first peaceful transfer of power in a democracy in the modern world, which shows that people can, even though they're angry and bitter about losing control and losing power, that they can lay that power down and that they can allow the other side to, to take over. And, and they will quote, and we have this, this tradition in our country where one side concedes to the other. Does anybody know what does that word mean concede when you concede? Nobody? Okay. Okay, um, it's where you, yeah, you guys are both on the right track. It's where you basically say, I recognize that you win, you know, in other words, I'm not going to like dispute, you know, that, that you've won. I'm recognizing that you've won. And it's kind of that whole, it goes back to, you know, George Washington laying down his power when he had all that power as, as the victorious general after this, after the revolution. And he could have become a king and he just went and laid his power down at the feet of Congress. Kind of the same sort of spirit where one side is saying, you know, we're not happy that we lost, but we respect the system enough. This democracy, this republic is important enough to us that we're going to lay our power down. And we're going to, we're going to concede to the other side, which, you know, does, I mean, does anybody remember in the news recently, anything having to do with conceding?
Wasn't Trump saying that he wouldn't have a peaceful transition of power or something like that?
Yeah, actually, both sides, both sides are talking. Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
They wouldn't accept the outcome of the election.
Didn't Hillary tell Joe Biden not to concede under any circumstances?
Yep, yep. So, so both sides have basically signaled at this point that they're not willing to concede. So this is a tradition that has gone all the way back. It's, it's a 220 year tradition. It goes all the way back to the very foundations of our republic. And this could be the year 2020 that it finally falls apart. So hopefully that won't be the case. Hopefully our institutions will survive, but you know, that is, that's a very important part of a, of a, of a stable democracy, that people respect the system more than they, they care about holding on to power. So anyway, just make sure you have that, that peaceful. I heard someone say something, but it got kind of chopped up.
I was saying that you were cutting out, but now it's.
Okay, yeah. All right. So just make sure you have that, that peaceful transfer, transition, peaceful transition of power is very important for stable democracies to survive. And it, and it did happen in 1800. So John Adams, to his credit, concedes along with the rest of the federalists. But that ends up creating, we, we end up having another problem and it had to do with the way that our founding fathers set up the original electoral system. Does anybody remember, we talked about this when we talked about the election of 18, or I'm sorry, the election of 1796? What was the original way that they determined who was president and who was vice president?
It was first and who was second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick, I didn't mean to cut you off. Yeah, um, yeah, the first place person. So obviously that's going to create problems because, you know, like if you're, if you have one party getting, you know, the presidency, the other party is likely going to get the vice presidency. Well, this time it created another problem because there was a tie. Because everybody was casting their, their two electoral votes. One for Burr and one for Jefferson, because you got to cast one, you know, for each of the candidates. And so both Burr and Jefferson were tied. And they both had 35 ballots. I'm sorry, no, they, no, excuse me. They both had a tie and they couldn't break the deadlock. There were six days of deadlock and 35 different ballots. A ballot is where you vote again. So they voted again 35 different times and they still had 35, they, I'm sorry, they still had a tie in electoral votes. I'm sorry, it's morning time, totally with it yet. And so what's the potential issue here? Like, why is, why is the tie matter so much? What are they trying to figure out? Ethan?
If there's a tie, then there's no real accurate way to tell who's president. And then I'd have to like use another form of like House of Representatives or some form of federal government to decide.
Right. In other words, Aaron Burr could become president instead of Thomas Jefferson. Chase, what were you going to say?
I was going to say that they both could just say that the president are a claim and that could lead to more fights, like internal fighting between them.
Yes, absolutely. Faith, what, what were you going to say?
Don't really know.
What now?
They don't, they won't really know who should be president and who should be vice president. And so that, like Chase said, that could cause a lot of conflict. And no one is going to really know who it should be. So someone may be president in place of somebody else and perhaps they shouldn't be.
Yes, yes. And then Zach, what were you going to say?
Um, so I was going to say that it would, um, it would turn out to be that both of the parties are going to, at some point, if it gets to the point, if it gets bad enough, they're both going to start claiming that it's unfair and unconstitutional. And they're going to claim that they won over the other side. And it could lead to civil unrest in the government.
All right. Well, we've already, we've already talked about the fact that the federalists have, have conceded in this election. But you're, you're right, the two people Burr and Jefferson, yes, and they could both kind of, this could also tear the republic apart. And Chase, you have your hand up. Did you just forget to put it down or did you have?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Okay, no problem. All right. So, um, yeah, this is a real problem. And it's just a flaw, like they didn't see that this potentially could be an issue. And so eventually it's Alexander Hamilton that, that breaks the tie. And he and his high federalist faction decide to switch their votes over to his old enemy, Thomas Jefferson, because they had to choose between one Democratic Republican and the other. And Hamilton's reasoning was that Aaron Burr was one of those people that you never want to get, get their hands on power. He was a, like a, a really ambitious, and Kenzie, I see your hand there. I'll, I'll get to you in just a sec. He's just a really ambitious like person with no principles, like an unscrupulous person is what we would call that. Who, who just would do anything to get their hands on power and do anything to hold on to it. So out of his dislike for Burr, Hamilton decides to support a guy who has been pretty much his arch enemy all the way up until this point. Kenzie, what were you going to say?
Actually, while I was doing research for my slide, found that he said during this, I believe that by, he was by far, Jefferson was by far not so dangerous as a man.
Yes, yes, not so dangerous. So Hamilton himself is looking to, you know, the stability of the republic. He's looking to, you know, maintain the the continuation of our democracy. And he sees Burr as a, as a, as a threat to it. And so he, he, you know, puts his support to Jefferson. And Nick, what were you going to say?
Um, despite the many differences, didn't Jefferson and Adams have like somewhat of a, or Jefferson and Hamilton have somewhat of a mutual respect for each other?
They did, they did. Yes. And, uh, but you know, it's like in politics, they were always opposition. You know, they were always in opposition. So, um, you know, this is politics right here. This isn't personal, you know, kind of friendship correspondence, that sort of thing. And so it is, it is significant that, uh, you know, that Thomas Jefferson would get to be president because of Alexander Hamilton. So just kind of one of those little ironies of history that, that often occur. And that takes us to our third president, Thomas Jefferson. Now, people don't like Thomas Jefferson because of the whole Sally Hemings thing. I mean, there were people who wanted to go and destroy the Jefferson Memorial in Washington DC recently during kind of all of that unrest this summer. But in a lot of ways, Thomas Jefferson was a very pivotal figure in the early republic. He, he is also an accomplished scientist like Benjamin Franklin. He invented the swivel chair and the dumb waiter out of his kind of scientific pursuits. But really, his big thing is being the strict constructionalist on the Constitution. So if you don't have that down, please write that down. That is very important distinction. I think we've talked about this before when we talked about Washington's cabinet and the, and the, the difference between Jefferson and Hamilton. So this is something, this is actually a legal term that is used, like when judges like give opinions, they, they, they cite strict constructionalism versus loose constructionalism. What is, what do you think that means? Does anybody remember from our previous discussion? Ethan, go ahead.
Strict constructionalism basically means when following the constitution, you follow only what's written down and basically takes, the word is basically gospel, but loose, like constructionalism and like loose interpretation to where some of the powers that lie outside the federal government are up to debate whether the federal government can do that.
Exactly. Yes. And Chase, uh, did you want to add to that at all?
Isn't he also very persuasive in his writing and his way of speaking?
He was, he was actually chosen to, to write the Declaration of Independence because he had kind of distinguished himself when everybody was like sending around those circular letters and everybody was, he, he had distinguished himself as just being a brilliant writer. So yes, yes, he is a very, a very persuasive and brilliant writer. And actually that was something we were going to add in a little later, but yeah. So, so to Ethan's point, um, this is something that is very important when it comes to Jefferson to, to remember. Jefferson is, is a purist when it comes to, you know, how to interpret the Constitution. He does not want any power going to the feds that is outside of that list in Article One, Section Eight, the enumerated powers. And so this really is very, uh, like it, it dictates like when he is trying to make decisions as president and sometimes like an opportunity will come along. That's just like a golden opportunity. And it's like, any politician would just jump on it. He will sit there and debate with himself. Well, do I have the power? Like, do I actually have the power to do this? So here, here's a guy who is all about states' rights and all about, but he's, he is the executive power of the federal government. So it's kind of funny how that works and you'll actually see that play out in a little bit. But also his vision is that of, of citizen farmers, you know, kind of the old Cincinnatus, you know, Roman Republic vision of democracy where, you know, you have all of these citizen farmers who they, they live in this agrarian paradise where everybody is out there kind of, you know, on their farms. But then when the republic needs them, they will lay down, you know, their, their plow and they will come and take up, you know, the, 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 like in the Roman Republic, they would call it the fascies, the symbol of power. And they will, you know, do what is necessary for the republic. And so that is his, his vision of, of what and this is going to be one of those visions that is going to endure far beyond Jefferson himself of what America should be and what America is. And oh, looks like Autumn is rejoining us. So that is actually something that will be in, in very much in opposition to some of the other visions that people will have now. In spite of the fact that he is a purist, he does retain a lot of Hamilton's policies because Hamilton was right about the you know, the whole I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I was admitting someone in and I had to try to mark them down. But he, he, he basically was like, he felt like, you know, establishing good credit for our country was, was a smart move. Like we could actually borrow money. So like when we needed to make a navy, we could make one because we could borrow the money and then pay it off later because people were willing to loan us money. So he, he kind of had some grudging respect for Hamilton's policies in a lot of ways. And yes, we, he also was a big advocate for separation of church and state. As a matter of fact, when the, the the Supreme Court was looking at what was the original intent of the founders? They actually go back to a letter that Thomas Jefferson wrote to the Danbury Baptist Association where he advocated the, there, there should be a quote wall of separation between church and state. And so when they interpret the establishment clause of the First Amendment as to whether or not, you know, the government should have involvement in, you know, various things like, should there be prayer in public schools? Should there be Bible reading, et cetera? In those Supreme Court cases, they will, they, they go back to the, to, to Jefferson's expressed views in that letter. Also, of course, we, we don't want to forget that Jefferson was a slave owner. Even though he wrote those immortal words, uh, you know, that we hold all these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. Uh, and then he did father an illegitimate child with one of his slaves, Sally Hemings. And it is a matter of debate as to whether or not that was a consensual relationship. But a master slave, it was in the context of this master slave relationship where, you know, it's always unequal. So he is in many ways a flawed figure, but also a very, very important figure. So we have to accept him with all of his, you know, complexity and flaws. But he is indeed very important. All right. So almost immediately, we have some, some political maneuvering. And you see this even now, we're, we're talking about the Amy Coney Barrett nomination right now in the news. And just like that, back then, both sides recognized that if they got a judge that tended to vote in their direction on the Supreme Court, that they would have a lasting influence on one of the branches of government. And so basically you have this situation where John Adams and the federalists, while John Adams is a lame duck, are nominating and confirming federalist judges to fill open seats. And there, this is like right up to the, the very wire, like it's like right down to the point where Adams is going to be out of office and, and Jefferson is going to be taking over. And so this is why we call these, these judges, the midnight judges, because the, the Senate was like confirming them en masse. But the Secretary of State had to deliver the commission of the judge into the judge's hand in order for that person to officially become a judge. And so, oh, little alarm there. Sorry about that. Uh, and then basically Thomas Jefferson comes into office and there is his Secretary of State, which is James Madison. And by the way, the Secretary of State, previous to this, John Marshall was the one delivering these, uh, these, these commissions. His Secretary of State, James Madison, suddenly is, is the new Secretary of State. And he has some commissions that haven't been delivered yet that he has to deliver. So a particular guy who was just going to be a justice of the peace in like Washington DC, it wasn't even like a, a very important judge position named it wasn't even like a, a very important judge position named Marbury, William Marbury. He basically was like, okay, I am a judge and you just, you have to give me my commission. And so he was, he was trying to obtain something called a writ of mandamus. A writ of mandamus is a court order that compels a government official to do something. Like a government official is like, okay, I'm supposed to enforce this particular law or whatever, but I don't want to, so I'm not doing it. And essentially, the, you know, the writ of mandamus will force them to do it. So he was seeking a writ of mandamus to force James Madison to deliver his commission to him. And this basically will end up going all the way up to the Supreme Court because anything having to do with it's just kind of a complicated legal thing, but writs of mandamus at this time, the court of original jurisdiction was the Supreme Court. So and, and basically there was this kind of procedure that had been set forth in the Judiciary Act of seventeen eighty-nine, which had set the original size of the court and the original size of the various federal courts underneath it. And so basically, this is going to create our, one of, one of the great Supreme Court cases in our history. As a matter of fact, it's going to be, you, you could argue that is the most important Supreme Court case. So it's kind of funny, the, the guy who was a Federalist, who was the Secretary of State, who was delivering all of these commissions, who had delivered a commission to himself to become the chief justice of the Supreme Court, John Marshall is now going to have to decide whether or not this guy, William Marbury, is going to be the new justice of the peace in Washington DC. So what do you think everybody's expecting John Marshall to do? Just based on politics, just based on the fact that he used to be the Federalist Secretary of State? Anybody? What, what do you think?
Probably make Madison hand it over.
Yeah, force Madison to hand over the writ of mandamus because this is, you know, this is politics and, and he's going to, he's going to support. This guy was literally making all of these Federalist judges, you know, like the midnight judges, judges right before Madison took over. And he himself is a midnight judge. So of course, you know, everybody's thinking, oh, he'll, he'll for sure do that. But in spite of that, John Marshall and the court are going to issue one of the most important decisions in our country's history because they're going to say, actually, the entire judiciary, well, the part, I'm sorry, the part of the Judiciary Act of seventeen eighty-nine that that basically establishes the Supreme Court as the court of original jurisdiction for writs of mandamus. That part of the Judiciary Act was quote unconstitutional because the, the federal district courts should be the courts of original jurisdiction for writs of mandamus. I know that sounds like a lot of legalese, but there, he's basically saying, hey, this should have gone through the lower courts first. Like when the Judiciary Act set this up, they violated the system set up in Article Three of the Constitution for how things should move through the courts. And essentially, right here, the Supreme Court has just taken up the power of nullifying a federal law. Like that was something that the states had done before in, you know, the Virginia and Kentucky resolutions where they had nullified the Alien and Sedition Acts, like the power to declare something unconstitutional in violation of the Constitution. But instead, now the Supreme Court is just doing it. And we all just accept it. Everybody is just like, okay. So the power that becomes known as judicial review, which is one of the most important checks and balances in our system now, is just established by John Marshall and the Supreme Court when they just take this power and nobody argues with them. Now, can anybody see a possible flaw in, in John Marshall's reasoning here? What, what's the obvious argument against Marbury v. Madison?
That it gives the judicial branch to just completely override the executive branch?
Yeah, or the, or the legislative branch. It, it gives the judicial branch an enormous amount of power because suddenly now they have power over federal law and they could decide whether federal laws are within the bounds to the Constitution or without. So this whole strict constructionalist versus loose constructionalist debate is now going to be settled by a couple of people who are appointed for life. And those couple of people could be voting, you know, a certain way. So Zach, you're 100% right on the money there. This, this is kind of, it's almost like a usurpation of power by the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court is just taking power. And of course, it would be a Federalist that would kind of do that because Federalists are always kind of like, you know, wanting the federal government to have more power. But the Supreme Court just takes over the power of deciding what is constitutional and what isn't in what is known as judicial review. Olivia, did you have a question or a question or a comment there?
I had a question. I am actually in government right now and we talked about this.
Yes.
And I'm reading the PowerPoint and I have my notes right now over what we talked about.
Yes.
And one of the things the teacher made us write down was Constitution means what the Supreme Court says it means. Is that basically what you just said?
Yeah, essentially, the Supreme, the Supreme Court takes that power in this case. Now legally, did they have good grounding to do that? Did they, did, did they have the legal authority to do that? I'm, I'm asking you to kind of think like lawyers here for a second. Did John Marshall have the legal authority under the Constitution to just take this power? Anyone? Kenzie? Or I'm sorry, looked like you were.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking no, but I could be wrong.
Okay, give me your reasoning. What, what, what made you kind of instinctively kind of go towards a no on that?
Well, the fact that everything was laid out where each branch had its own power and you couldn't really take more than you had is making me think no.
Right.
But if it's unconstitutional.
Right, but who gets to decide what's unconstitutional? Right, but you're on the right track. You very much are on the right track. Zach, what did you want to add to that?
I think you could also look at it from the position that Marbury was trying to force the executive branch with Madison to do something and that the judicial branch with Marshall said that you can't do that.
Okay.
Like, like Marbury was trying to force Madison to do something and then the judicial branch stepped in and said, you're not allowed to do that.
Right, yeah. And so a writ of mandamus is, you know, it, it, yeah, it's compelling a federal. But of course, that federal officer who is under a writ of mandamus is, it has to be a power, it's something that they're supposed to do. So it's not giving them a new power that they didn't have before. It just, it's a power that they already have that they're supposed to execute, but they're just not executing it. But yes, you're both on the right track here and really essentially, this is a power grab. And, and so Olivia, you were right. This is now from here on out, the Constitution means what the Supreme Court decides it means. And, and this is a huge power grab for, for the Supreme Court. And it has made the Supreme Court much more influential than the founding fathers ever intended for it to be. But because nobody argued with it, because nobody like, you know, said, hey, and, and tried to stop it. There was no huge reaction by the states. This is a power that the federal government just assumes. They just take it over. And the states basically have lost this power without really realizing it. Yes, Nick?
That's what I was going to ask. I was going to ask if they just, like, if they just didn't care or if they just didn't realize that they were giving the federal and specifically the judicial branch so much power at the time?
Yeah.
And that's why they didn't intervene?
The consensus of historians is that the states just weren't aware of how important this was at the time. Like how much of a power grab this was. But from here on out, the Supreme Court has the power of judicial review. They are the referee. And the states who still believe that they have nullification powers, because you will see that in the nullification crisis, they, they will kind of slowly lose that power to decide whether something is constitutional or not. And Nick, you still have your hand raised? Did you want to say something else?
I was going to say, shoot, I forgot my questions, sorry.
Just come back when you remember it. And Brayden, what were you going to say?
Um, so what happens now if the states disagree with federal law? Do they just not have any say in it whatsoever?
You'll see, okay? I, I hate to spoil the nullification crisis, but Andrew Jackson, the first president from Tennessee, is going to have a very forceful reaction to nullification. And so I'll just, I'll hint at it there and leave it at that. But let's just say that the, the, the question will be resolved with a forceful kind of answer. And so we'll, we'll, we'll come back to your question. It's an excellent question. You're looking ahead. And I, I hate to like just totally spoil it, so I'm going to wait and just kind of hint at it right now. And Nick, what were you going to say?
I was going to ask, is it, has it just been, has it been written to, into law, the judicial review thing? Or is it just implied and just known now?
Well, essentially, Supreme Court decisions now carry, I mean, they, court decisions are what we call case law. They carry the weight of, of federal authority. And so the Supreme Court will, of course, originally had the, the power to decide what federal laws mean. But now also has the power to decide whether federal laws fit within the Constitution. So it just, it's one of those things. It's like what we call an informal amendment of the Constitution. Like, so like, it's like when the war power gets transferred over effectively to the president in the National Security Act of nineteen forty-seven, in the middle of the Cold War, everybody just agrees. You know, everybody's just like, oh yeah, we need to do that. And so effectively, the Constitution is amended, but it's not with an actual amendment. It, it's, it's an informal amendment. So I just can't understate how important this is. This is huge. So just remember that, that from here on out, the Supreme Court is going to have a lot more power. And of course, William Marbury does not get to be a judge, which is kind of the small result here. But, you know, of course, it's, it's a much bigger in its implications. All right, that is going to take us to the Second Great Awakening. So this is a massive Christian revival that is going to take place in the now newly free United States. We had one originally under the, in the colonies, but this is a, a new one. And it has a tremendous impact on history because hundreds of thousands of, of Americans are converted to a very real and very personal Christian faith in what are known as tent revival meetings. And so these are led by various preachers, but it all starts with a tent revival meeting at the Creedence Clearwater Church. And so there's actually a band that's named for this. Does anybody know it's a band from the seventies?
I know, yeah, my mom listened to them all the time.
They're the ones that wrote Fortunate Son.
Right, CCR, yeah.
Creedence Clearwater Revival.
Yeah, so that's what they're actually referring to is this. It's, it's kind of hilarious that, you know, like a band from the seventies, which really isn't, you know, like talking about a lot of, they're kind of like seen as anti-establishment, anti-Vietnam War kind of, you know, band. Is, you know, is, is taking its name from this, but it actually is, is, you know, kind of has these, these preachers like Charles Finney, Lyman Beecher, James McGready, Timothy Dwight the Fourth. And they were basically reacting to how the Congregationalist Church in New England was being disestablished. You know, when we talked about the halfway covenant, how people were kind of like, you know, no longer worried about church membership, et cetera. And it also, the controversy created by a new, a new like faith that really a lot of Christians consider to not even be Christian in, in its, in its very core beliefs called the Unitarians. Does anyone know kind of what is the huge difference between, because the Unitarian Church is still around today? What is the big difference between Unitarians and pretty much all other branches of Christendom? Because most, like even Catholics and Protestants agree that Unitarians aren't technically Christian, but Unitarians call themselves Christian. What, what is the central controversy there? Yes, Max?
It's, it's whether God is one person or it's the Trinity. I'm pretty sure that's.
Yes, yes, that is it. And that is a central doctrine. That goes all the way back to the Nicene Creed, you know, way back in the days of, of Constantine. And that was a, you know, that was where the Trinity was established. And that was where, because there was this, this kind of this, this, what, what we now call a heresy. It was, it was a different interpretation of Christianity at the time called Arianism, where they believed that Jesus wasn't fully divine. And Max, you still have your hand up? Did you want to say something else?
Nope.
Okay, Zach, what were you going to add?
This may sound really ignorant, but why does it matter? Like, did it change anything of how they practiced or was it just a different belief in one thing?
And anyone who wants to answer that as well, feel free. But from, and, and I see Faith's hand, so Faith, I'm going to get to you in just a second. From what I am familiar with, if you don't have the Trinity, then Jesus isn't divine. So Jesus isn't part of the Godhead. And if he isn't part of the Godhead, then his sacrifice isn't a sacrifice for all of humanity. It isn't something that can atone for the sins of everyone. So in order for his, his death to matter that much and to be the atoning sacrifice for all sins of humanity, he has to be more than just a human being. He has to be a part of the Godhead. And so when you deny the Trinity, you deny the, the efficacy of, of the, the atoning sacrifice of Jesus Christ. And Faith, what were you going to say?
Basically covered what I was going to say, but yeah, it's really important because if you're saying that Jesus is less than God, then yeah, that kind of nullifies his, his sacrifice.
Yeah.
So yeah, you pretty much did what I was going to say.
Right, so kind of back to, yeah, so the, the whole fact that, that Unitarians were making strides and the Congregationalist Church was losing its, its once powerful influence really drove this, you know, these preachers to go out and, and to try to make converts and to really, you know, try to embed the faith. And so the American Home Missionary Society was created and they were the ones who were kind of like financing all of these, these tent revival tours, which had an incredible effect. And also it's, it's very much along the lines of the more new light preaching, the more emotional appeal type preaching. As a matter of fact, Charles Finney was famous for his hell and brimstone type sermons that were, that go along with kind of the Jonathan Edwards, sinners in the hands of an angry God kind of way of converting people like, you know, do you understand what hell will be like, what an eternity of separation from God will be like? The torture, the pain, you know, you know, make this decision, save your eternal soul from all of this torment kind of appeal. And, you know, to a certain extent, it is an appeal that is very much based in the emotion of fear, which caused, you know, huge numbers of people to become very Christian. And this is going to have huge historical implications. Zach, what were you going to say?
I don't know if anybody else has seen this movie, but there will be blood. There's like a really super like, like kind of this kind of preacher where it's fire and brimstone and stuff. And I think that's a pretty good exit. I guess that's what I thought of.
Okay, yeah, you know, I have wanted to see that movie. That's like on my list of movies I want to see, but I haven't had a chance. But, you know, anything, anything where Daniel Day Lewis is, is, is the actor, I'm just like, I, especially if it's historical, I want to see it because I think like his depiction of Lincoln was just. I want to see it because I think, like, his depiction of Lincoln was just, it's still one of my favorite movies. Like, I can't get over how amazing it is, you know, his, how well he does things. But anyway, little aside there, but yeah, it it that fire and brimstone. So here is my big question about the Second Great Awakening. As we go down the road, this is going to have a huge influence on this whole theme of this particular unit, which is states' rights versus federal rights. What is the big effect of the of the Second Great Awakening on the country that is eventually going to lead to some really powerful things happening? Anyone want to take a shot at that? I'll give you a hint. It is especially especially important in the North. Anyone?
Slavery.
Okay, that, yes, you are on the right track. Slavery. Zach, what were you gonna say?
Does it end up causing like an anti-war, pro-war thing in the North, like separation over like what God would want or something?
Okay, in in relation to what Kenzie just said, which is the topic of slavery. So how does people becoming more Christian or more like, like, I would get sincere in their Christian faith affect the issue of slavery? Zach? Zach Van den Bush, are you?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so people are starting to, when they're like convert, like going into Christianity, they're starting to read the Bible more and realizing that the Bible's teachings would go against how things are actually playing out. And they're realizing that it's a very bad thing that's going on, so they start to disagree with it more and more up north.
Yeah. And and by the way, we're gonna get, we're gonna get into like how ugly slavery really is. And 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 just, you know, there've been some movies recently that have done a great job depicting it. But when you see the true nature of that institution and you are a sincere Christian, there are some conflicts. Chase, what were you gonna say?
I kind of agree with Zach on that. People are gonna start exercising their religion more, especially up north due to everyone being together. And I feel like that's gonna lead to a lot of people not liking slavery and how certain things are gonna be ran during America at the time.
Yes, okay, very good. You're you're one hundred percent right on the right track there. Faith, what were you gonna say?
I think that.
Oh, I think you're you're cutting out a little bit. Go ahead and restart there.
Through Christianity, people are gonna see how wicked things slavery really is, the cruelty. You know, in the Bible, it says, love your neighbor as yourself. And the inherent cruelty that slavery brings along, that it really conflicts with a lot of what the Bible says. And so people are gonna start realizing, hey, this is something that we shouldn't be doing as Christians.
It's a, it's fundamentally morally evil, is kind of what you're getting at. And Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was, but I was going to say that basically it would cause a lot more of abolitionist movements to start in the North and start to bring that movement more into the light.
Yeah, yeah. And and like, when we're thinking about this, it's like, what could cause people to have a higher loyalty than the loyalty to the Republic, to loyalty to the, to keeping our country together? And one of the few things that that really can inspire that higher loyalty is is religion. Scott, what were you gonna add?
So people down the South see this as, oh, shoot, they're gonna start coming for our slaves and then import tons of slaves.
Boom, yes, very good. It's gonna create creates anxiety in the South. A huge amount of anxiety over whether Northerners are are going to try to use the power of Congress. Where, again, because of population, they're going to have, always gonna have an advantage in the House of Representatives. And they're going to gain advantages in the Senate here and there. Is that going to really, you know, cause them to pass federal laws? Zach, you have your hand up again. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Sorry, I just forgot to lower it.
Okay. And Autumn, I saw your hand for a second there. Did you want to add anything?
I just had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So why didn't this happen sooner? Because I feel like they always read the Bible because didn't they use it like against the slaves? So what was different about these speakers that changed that?
So why didn't the Second Great Awakening happen sooner? Or why didn't the the reaction against slavery happen sooner?
The reaction against slavery.
The reaction against slavery? All right. It's because as people become more Christian in their faith, they definitely have this more, this stronger moral reaction. But a lot of people don't realize how ugly slavery really is until this little old lady named Harriet Beecher Stowe writes a book, which is going, is like, because people didn't have movies to go to back then, people didn't have a lot of, there weren't all the forms of entertainment that we have nowadays. So people actually read books for fun. I mean, I know in our day and age, it's like people are like, what? People read books for fun, for entertainment? But and and that book is going to dramatize how ugly and how morally awful the the So you already have the the moral compass being pointed in the right direction by this this revival, this powerful revival, which is going to have effects for generations. But people aren't gonna get to see how ugly slavery is because a lot of them don't travel to the South and see it firsthand until this book basically lays it out. And that's when the mood of the country is really going to shift, especially in the North against slavery. Yes, Zach?
Would the North's reliance on the South's cotton for their textile mills and the like First Industrial Revolution have something to do that with that too, where they're also getting economic benefit from it?
Yeah, there's there's definite economic ties between the North and the South. And so, again, there are a lot of reasons to keep the country together. And of course, you know, people don't want the first, you know, experiment in democracy to be a failure, you know? I mean, there's so many things that that kind of play into this. But you'll see, as we get further in, that slavery really is going to cause, you know, kind of this division. You know, as, and this is a growing kind of division between North and South, which we call sectionalism, which we'll be getting into. I have a, I have a slide on it coming up. But yeah, so so the the impact of the Second Great Awakening is is huge. And and just culturally, America has always been this this really kind of strong Judeo-Christian nation for, you know, I mean, for most of our history. And you can trace a lot of that back to the Second Great Awakening because of the huge numbers of people who who were converted at this time. And and just kind of like, you know, the the power of of grassroots organizations like churches and just, you know, individual families continuing to pass that faith on, how that has kind of changed America culturally and and religiously. Faith, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna kind of add on to what you said. A huge thing about like slavery, not the people not wanting it to end, wasn't there a huge economic issue? Like, it wasn't even that they wanted to keep treating their slaves badly. I mean, they tried to convince themselves that they were less than human to try to justify it. But it was mostly an economic issue. Because if slavery was abolished, then they would have, they wouldn't have workers and they wouldn't have the means of efficiently, I guess, getting all that work done. That was their sort of excuse. It was economic.
Yeah, and and that the Southerners, that that, it really is the heart of why they do it, is is because of, you know, economic reasons. They don't want that Southern way of life to disappear, which they have fallen in love with. And of course, without slavery, it's impossible for them to have that. Because they just, they they need that many hands to pick all that cotton. And of course, they want to keep those profit margins where they are so they can continue to live their comfortable lives. And that's among that upper class. So of course, there is a poorer white class in the South that doesn't have as many slaves that where it's a little different. But yes, you you are corrected. The the motivations are very, very tied to economics. So again, we can't understate how important the Second Great Awakening is. And that takes us to a war that Jefferson gets us involved in. Okay? So this is a little bit of world history here. But throughout the Middle Ages, there were these Islamic pirates called the Saracens who had ravaged Europe. So while the Vikings were, you know, ravaging Europe from the North, you know, during what is known as the Dark Ages, the Saracens had been ravaging Europe in the South. And they would just show up and disembark from their ships and ta- attack, burn, destroy, kill, take stuff. And these little Saracen kingdoms had kind of, a lot of them had survived all the way up into the nineteenth century. And the, they were known basically as the Barbary Pirates. And the way that a lot of European nations dealt with them is they just bribed them. They just were like, okay, if we pay you X amount of, you know, dollars or whatever currency it is, will you leave our ships alone, you know, for this particular year? And that, generally speaking, that was how European nations dealt with it. Because often the cost of the bribe was far, you know, a small, that was, it was percentage wise, it was small compared to the amount of of money they were making via commerce. So the Mediterranean, you had to pay your dues, so to speak, and pay off the pirates. Well, the Barbary States now saw a new nation with with its ships kind of coming into the Mediterranean, that was the United States. And we had paid basically two million dollars a year to them since seventeen eighty nine. But when the day of Algiers, and so the the day is like a Islamic, you know, title, is kind of like Sultan, demanded more tribute in eighteen oh one, the Jefferson administration decided to show off the strength of our new navy. Because we had built a navy during the Quasiwar, when we were slugging it out with France on the high seas. And so this is what we call the Barbary Wars. And this basically is, you know, wars that will actually go on far longer than Jefferson's time in office against these little pirate states in the in the Mediterranean. And think about how difficult it is to fight a war against, you know, these little principalities that are like half a world away. They're like on the other side of the world. And basically, these little, the first, the first country to be blockaded was Algiers when Lieutenant Stephen Decatur blocked them. And then Tripoli was forced to sue for peace in eighteen oh five. And there was wars with the other ones that lasted until eighteen fifteen. So well into some other administrations, these wars will continue. And again, this is going to build the reputation and the strength of the US Navy. The the federal government is going to keep pouring in resources to build our navy up because of this continuing war against the Barbary Pirates, which won't come to an end until eighteen fifteen. But this is in some of the hymns, I, you know, and to the shores of Tripoli, you know, for our armed forces, like that kind of, you know, show how embedded this is into our our early military history. Yes, Max? Max, you have your hand up?
Apparently I did. I didn't know I did.
Oh, okay, all right. So that's the war against the Barbary Pirates. And that takes us to another little bit of world history that's gonna become very important. So we have a series of revolutions that occur in the late seventeen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds, called the Atlantic Revolutions. The first one is the American Revolution. The second is the French Revolution. And the third is this one, the Haitian Revolution. Haiti is the only major French colony in the Caribbean. It was the only real possession that the 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 French had left after the, you know, the 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 French and Indian War, the Seven Years' War, where France lost all of its colonies in the New World, except for that. Now, Napoleon had been on his conquering streak, and we're gonna talk about this when we talk about the Napoleonic Wars. But in eighteen hundred, he had pressured Spain into giving back the territory that that had been given to Spain at the at the conclusion of the Revolutionary War. I'm sorry, of the conclusion of the of the French and Indian War, where they had basically gotten the Louisiana Purchase, I'm sorry, the the Territory of Louisiana. And in the Third Treaty of San Ildefonso, Louisiana was now back in the hands of the French. And so the French had their colony, and they had a naval base where they could protect that colony. Because in order to have a colony, you have to have access. So the French Navy in the Caribbean was based in Haiti. But in seventeen ninety one, a a slave named Toussaint Leau Verture led a revolt, a slave revolt in Haiti. And it is actually the only successful slave revolt in history. Because Toussaint Leau Verture was so capable as a commander that he was able to defeat defeat one French general after another. Because like Napoleon was sending in some of his top guys, like Charles Leclerc, to try to put down this slave rebellion, and they were unable to do so. So you have to give Toussaint Leau Verture an incredible amount of credit for his role. But he actually, they say, okay, fine, okay, fine, we're gonna sue for peace. Mr. Verture, come in and negotiate with us this this peace treaty. Now, can anybody guess what what the French, who have been driven to the point of desperation, are actually planning to do here? It's dirty.
Arrest them, backstab them.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna kill him, right, yeah. And so when he comes in to negotiate peace, yes, Zach, you have your hand up?
I didn't mean to do that. I was trying to mute myself and I accidentally hit raise hand.
Got it, no problem. But yeah, they they killed Toussaint Leau Verture, thinking that that finally will kill the Haitian Revolution, but it doesn't. Because one of Toussaint Leau Verture's top generals, one of his top lieutenants, Jacques Dessalines, had had basically learned so much from kind of the master strategist Leau Leau Verture that he ends up continuing this war until finally the French are forced to sue for peace. And and they, Haiti gets its independence. They win their independence as a independent country, not controlled by any European power. So the French colony originally was called Saint-Domingue. And it changes its name to Haiti after they win their independence. And that is going to lead to some decisions by Napoleon having to do with Louisiana. And so this decision to basically, you know, well, actually, the 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 whole impact of Haiti getting its independence meant that the French care, the the French really didn't have a naval base in the Caribbean, which meant that if some other power, whether it be the United States or Spain or Britain, decided to attack Louisiana, it it meant that they really couldn't defend it because they couldn't defend their supply lines to it. So Thomas Jefferson had actually sent some ambassadors over after the tension in the Quasiwar to try to smooth things over with Napoleon and say, hey, you know, let's establish a good relationship. Let's, you know, I know that we didn't support you and 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 honor the treaty that we made. But we would really like to have a better relationship, you know, even after the whole Quasiwar thing. And these ambassadors are stunned by an off, by an offer made by Napoleon. Napoleon, being a very logical, very practical person, is like, well, somebody's gonna take Louisiana at some point. I just, I I don't have a way to defend it without being able to maintain my supply lines. So he he offers to sell it to us. He's like, I might as well get some money out of it before I lose it. And so he offers to sell the Louisiana Territory, which is vast territory claimed by France because France had pressured Spain into giving it back to them and to to us for the price of fifteen million dollars. Anybody, is that a good deal or not?
It's a very good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, um, Zach, what were you gonna say?
It's a very good deal because it's, just because of the sheer amount of land that comes with that, it comes at like, I think I read it was like around five cents an acre.
Actually, it was. It's, it's like three cents an acre. Yeah, but go ahead.
Three, uh, well, I mean, still, that's still like, for how much land it was, it was more, it was so much more favorable to, uh, the US than it was to France. Like, they needed the money, but we just got a crazy huge amount of land for like dirt cheap. Literally, we got dirt for dirt cheap.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, it, you would have to be insane not to take this deal. Uh, Faith, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say it was a good deal for, uh, America, but definitely not for the French. I feel like France could have gotten a lot more money out of it.
Very likely, very likely. But Napoleon needed money to finance his wars that he was fighting over in Europe. And so to him, this was a good deal because he's like, I'm gonna lose it anyway. So I might as well offer them a good deal that they're bound to take and I'll get a bunch of money that I need to fight my wars. Chase, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say it's also a really good deal for us because it gives us access to, like, closer to the other coast and like new resources and stuff to fund our expansions.
It literally would double the size of our country. Now, with all of this, get this, President Jefferson is hesitant. Anybody want to guess why? Why is President Jefferson hesitant to take this deal? What could possibly make him not want to take this deal? Faith, what were you gonna say?
I think he's probably freaked out. He's like, why are they offering this territory for so cheap? It's so big and they're offering it to me for a really cheap amount. Is there something there that I should know about?
There's gotta be a catch. Okay. Brayden, what were you gonna say?
He's like, do I have this power? Like, like, he, he doesn't want the federal government to have much power. So he, he's questioning if it's his place to accept this purchase.
Yeah, it's not in the list of enumerated powers, like to make these giant land deals. Um, Zach, what were you gonna say?
Um, do the Native Americans living there understand what happened? Or did they just show up and were like, hey, later?
That, well, Native Americans don't understand like these, these kind of land deals being made between Europeans. And they don't recognize their authority. We're actually going to get like hammered by some of the Great Plains tribes which are in the Louisiana Purchase. Like absolutely, like they're gonna beat our post-Civil War Army. They're that good. Um, so they don't recognize any authority. So like right now, it's basically just a giant chunk of land that we have a very sparse presence in, but.
You can find that a little bit.
Yeah, on the maps that everybody looks at when they look at the world, like the Europeans and us and everybody, like, you know, the white people's world, um, it, it's recognized as belonging to us. But of course, they don't recognize any of that. And, and when it comes down to it, we're going to have to fight them for control of it. And for a little while, they're gonna just like absolutely stomp us. Um, so we'll get to all that, uh, in a little while, but, uh, that's an excellent question. And Max, what were you gonna say?
Would, would we have the ability to defend this sudden increase in territory like at all at this point?
Okay, against, against whom? Like what, what, like, 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 that a little bit more?
Uh, Spain, am I correct in saying Spain is still there, right?
Right.
Spain is still on the West Coast?
Yes.
I'm sure they'd want like at least a little chunk of that.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, they just got forced by Napoleon to give it up. Here's their problem. Their entire military is, is like basically struggling with Napoleon and the Napoleonic Wars and will be for the next decade or so. So like, they have no resources to deal with this, um, uh, like at all. Uh, so, you know, it, that's an excellent question. It's just that Spain, you know, it's like, ooh, suddenly we have a neighbor to our, you know, our, our east, which is much weaker than the previous, you know, neighbor. Uh, but they just don't have the resources to do it, uh, right now. Autumn, what were you gonna say?
Um, I was just gonna ask, did he have any hesitation because of the natives or was that just?
It's not because of the natives, it's because of what Brayden was saying. It was like, he was like thinking, do I have this, the constitutional authority? And people around him are like literally screaming at him. They're like, I, you, you would be a fool not to take this deal. I, I mean, technically it's not in the list, but come on, I mean, we're gonna double the size of the country for dirt cheap. Please don't be a fool. So, yeah, that's, I mean, really, he, he, hi- his whole hangup is do I have the authority? Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and then Ethan, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
So how are they gonna deal with like governing the new territories when they, you know, still have established territories like, you know, in Mississippi and south of the Ohio River?
All, all excellent questions, uh, to be answered as we get, uh, further in. Essentially, uh, to the short answer is we send out a territorial governor. And that territorial governor is responsible and really is a military person. That territorial governor is just responsible for like controlling a huge area. And basically they just send soldiers out to deal with various threats, but they, they have a tendency to just not bother the natives very much. Um, and instead it's only Europeans that they worry about. But because Europeans are so tied up with other concerns, there's, they really don't encroach on the, on the territory. But you'll, it'll be interesting because one of those governors, those military governors will actually be offered a chance to break the Louisiana Territory away and have it join another country. And there's all these little treasonous things, you know, that, uh, are going to be a part of that. So we're gonna get to that. Uh, when we talk about James Wilkinson, um, who was the territorial governor of Louisiana, uh, under the military for a little while. All right, so that's the Louisiana Purchase. We do, Jefferson overcomes his, 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 uh, uh, misgivings and does make this purchase. And of course, the Democratic Republicans become, the political consequences are huge. People are just like, these guys are awesome, you know, because now suddenly our country is twice as big as it used to be. And so they're riding a huge wave of popularity after the Louisiana Purchase. Which takes us to our attempt to try to establish more of an American claim to this territory, um, with an expedition that was commissioned by President Jefferson, known as the Lewis and Clark Expedition. And actually, this is Lauren and Mary. And Lauren and Mary, you're both with us today, uh, so I will allow you guys to kind of tag team. Um, uh, this is your slide. So Lauren, did you want to start us off here with, um, kind of your take on this and then we'll let Mary pick up? Lauren? Lauren, are you with us?
Yeah, I am. I have all good.
All right. So, uh, we're to your slide, we're, uh, to the Lewis and Clark Expedition. So did you want to kind of jump in and, uh, and say, you know, what you wanted to, um, do, say like regarding, I don't know if, uh, where, where does your research focus on this?
Um, I haven't actually started a lot. I just got about like basic information down. But I can talk about like a little bit of the beginning of what happened.
All right. And then Mary, um, where, where does your research focus on this?
Um, it's a lot of the same stuff.
Okay. So is it okay with you if, uh, Lauren does like some of the first part of it? And then we'll like kind of pick up with you, uh, a little further on?
Okay, sure.
All right. So Lauren, go ahead and start us off and then we'll let Mary kind of pick up from where you leave off.
Um, all right. Well, the Lewis and Clark Expedition began in eighteen oh four around when President Thomas Jefferson asked Meriwether Lewis with exploring lands west of the Mississippi River. Uh, that comes from the Louisiana Purchase. Louis, Louis chaired the Lewis and Clark Expedition and the expedition lasted over two years.
All right. Well, give me, let me ask a question real quick. Why did he feel like he needed to, to pick Mr. Clark? So you can see there, here's, uh, Meriwether Lewis on the left, a, a close confidant of, uh, of, of President Jefferson, a close friend of his, who is, uh, his personal secretary, okay? Kind of like the equivalent of today's White House Chief of Staff. And, um, why did he feel like he needed to, to include Mr. Clark? Wh- what is Mr. Clark bringing to this expedition that is, that is so important?
Um, all I have so far was that he joined the militia in the regular army where he served with.
Okay. And Mary, did you have anything to add? Why, why is it so important to add Mr. Clark to this expedition? Mary?
Um, I, sorry, uh, let me just pull it up. Uh, Clark, Clark was, um, he's, he was in the militia and then the regular army. He served with Lewis and was commissioned by George Washington as a lieutenant of, of infantry.
Yeah, and, and, and Clark had spent a good amount of time out west. Um, and so he was kind of considered this more frontier, you know, relations with the natives kind of, you know, guy who could, uh, you know, Meriwether Lewis is there to represent the interests of Thomas Jefferson. Uh, I mean, even to the point of like Thomas Jefferson, who's like, uh, really huge into science, saying, hey, bring me back new examples of plants and animals that you find that, that we don't have documented anywhere. Cause he wants to make a splash. He's still looking to make a splash in the, um, European Enlightenment community by saying, hey, new species of plant, new species of animal, you know, kind of thing. Um, so Lewis is very much the, the representative of Jefferson. And Clark is more the, the kind of the, you know, let's get it done, practical kind of guy who is going to really, um, you know, be like the one who's like, hey, let's negotiate, you know, uh, the, the, the terrain. Let's negotiate our way through the various tribes, et cetera. All right, so, um, Mary, I want to let you pick up from here. So where, tell us, how does this expedition like move along the map? Like what is their route? What, um, what do they, uh, encounter along the way and, and what makes the expedition more successful? Mary? Mary, did you hear me? I don't know if Mary heard me there. Um, okay, Lauren, I'm gonna let you continue there, um, to, to continue with what you know about this. Hello? All right. Is everybody still hearing me? Cause I'm wondering if.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Cannot unmute myself.
Oh, you couldn't unmute yourself? Okay, good. All right. So, um, so Lauren, go ahead and continue.
My bad.
Go ahead. Um, can you tell us about more of the expedition?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah. So the mission was to explore the Uninterterritorial Territory as we studied established trade with the natives and affirmed the sovereignty of the United States and the reason they want to, um, to basically get to know the land. So one of their goals was to find a waterway from the US to the Pacific Ocean and Lewis and Clark commanded the Corps of Discovery.
Okay, so yes, very important. They wanted to find this waterway that would actually reach from, uh, the, uh, Mississippi, which they were very familiar with, all the way to the Pacific Ocean. Because of course that would be key. They didn't know if there was a waterway that did that. So what river do they end up taking most of the journey? They, they, most of the journey is by canoe, by river. Um, what, what's, this is the second longest river in the United States, uh, aside from the Mississippi. What river do they follow? Um, okay, I couldn't quite hear you, uh.
Is, is it like the Missouri River?
Yes, very good. Mary, it is the Missouri River. Um, and Mary, do you have some additional, um, detail about like what kind of things they encounter along the way? As they're following the Missouri?
They, they encountered a lot of like Native American, um, Native American tribes on their, on their journey to the west.
Yeah. One of those was, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead. You were gonna say something and I was, I was cutting you off there.
Oh, I was just gonna like list the tribes and stuff that they kind of met up.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead and do that.
Like they met with like the Sashone, the Mandan, the Mitanari, the Blackfeet, the Chinook and the Sioux.
Yeah, the Sioux, which you're, that, that's pronounced Sioux, also known as Lil' Coda, which is actually one of the most powerful Great Plains tribes there are. I mean, they're like, like going to war with them would have been literal suicide. And they almost end up going to war, uh, with the Sioux, which would have ended the expedition. The expedition would have been wiped out had that happened. Um, but what was their way of getting, uh, passage through these, the lands of these tribes? Like, what, what two critical individuals made a huge difference in, in the success of this, uh, expedition?
Um, I know one of them is Sacagawea.
Yes. And, um, so tell us about Sacagawea and her, um, her husband, uh, Toussaint Charbonneau.
Yeah, um, while at Fort Mandan, um, Lewis and Clark met French-Canadian chaperur like, uh, Trisant Charbonneau. And they hired him as an interpreter. They allowed his pregnant Sashone Indian wife, Sacagawea, to join on the, on the expedition.
Okay, excellent. Um, and actually, who ended up being the better translator? Um, cause you're, every tribe that you're coming across is speaking a different language. Um, uh, who ended up being better at, at actually, uh, negotiating and translating with the tribes?
Um, Sacagawea, I think, since she had more, a deeper understanding of the cultures.
Yes, yes. And so Sacagawea becomes one of the keys to the success of the Lewis and Clark Expedition. Um, and, uh, there, they, they find out as they get further in that the, um, the Missouri River runs out of the Rocky Mountains. So they have to disembark from their canoes and they have to, um, basically, uh, traverse the, the, the Rocky Mountain range on foot. Uh, at this point, what happens between Lewis and, and Clark? Uh, between Meriwether Lewis and, and, um, William Clark? Do, do either of you have that? Um, they have a disagreement. Do you have anything about the disagreement they have?
Uh, I don't think I've been across that yet. I entered my research at about Sacagawea.
Okay, all right. Um, well, basically the two of them disagree about which way is the best way to go. So the expedition actually splits in half with, um, some of the people following, uh, Meriwether Lewis and some of them following, um, uh, William Clark. But they end up meeting up again, uh, as they get to the Snake River and then the Columbia River, um, which are up in the Northwest. And they end up following those rivers all the way out to the ocean, to the Pacific Ocean. Along the way, meeting tribes like the Nez Perce, who we'll be talking about again later in history, who, uh, they established friendly relationships with. So as they're going, they're basically saying, hey, we're the new owners of this land. Except this area over here, um, that is, uh, kind of beyond the Louisiana Purchase, is that really ours? Does, no, I mean, it like technically on the big maps, you know, that everybody had, it wasn't, it was kind of claimed by Britain, claimed by Spain, but it was, it was, it was a territory that weren't, didn't have a large presence of Europeans in. So anyway, um, they reach, um, the Pacific Ocean in eighteen oh five and then they return, uh, in eighteen oh six. And, um, uh, you know, their journal has become one of the great primary sources of, um, this, uh, time in our history, uh, containing all kinds of, of vivid details about the tribes out west, how they lived, uh, et cetera. And, um, you know, it's, it's just one of those, those, those great sources that we go back to, uh, quite often. Uh, when we're looking for, you know, something from the time that can give us a clue about blank. Uh, so Lewis and Clark Expedition, very important, uh, hard to understate how important it is, um, in terms of, uh, establishing our knowledge of the great Western reaches that we now have access to. Nick, what were you gonna say?
Um, how did Sacagawea and Toussaint come to be? Like, I, it said he was half Indian, so how did that happen? Like, what did, what did his background?
Okay, so, um, the, the French, um, established this kind of more cordial relationship with, uh, Native Americans. Remember that, that Louisiana was French for a long time and then it became Spanish and then it became French again. And so you had Frenchmen who went off and married, um, native women, uh, and, and had children. And so that is his background. He actually is, um, the, uh, the child of a, of a Frenchman and, and a Native American woman. And he makes his living the way that a lot of Native Americans made their living when they were dealing with the French, which was through fur trapping. They would go out and they would get all of these, they were, they were. which was through fur trapping. They would go out and they would get all of these, they were, they were hunters essentially. They would kill all of these animals and skin them, get their furs. Because remember, the Little Ice Age in Europe was causing people to, you know, experience very heavy winters. So there's this huge market for furs. It's still going on. And so, um, he, he makes his living that way. And of course, while he's out on his various hunting journeys, he meets and falls in love with this Shoshone woman, Sacagawea. And they, um, have become married and have children. And actually, uh, she's pregnant with one of their children while they're on this expedition. So he, he's kind of out there in the wilderness, um, living the way some of these, uh, the, the, the fur trapper natives, but also some enterprising Frenchmen, um, lived. Uh, and so it's kind of an interesting little side story, you know? We, we forget about all of the, um, the kind of, the remnants of those, those earlier, um, relationships and, and, you know, um, uh, colonies that were, were there, that there were still people who were living that way, uh, as we move into the history of the United States. And Scott, what was your question?
So if the people on the expedition would have just died and never came back, do you think they would just keep sending out expedition forces?
Yeah, and probably, probably it would have been a much more heavily militarily armed force that they would have sent out the second time. Like, uh, lucky for the Lewis and Clark expedition that they managed to be diplomatic with the tribes. Uh, and, and because, you know, when you don't speak the language, it's very easy for things to kind of go in a bad direction. Um, so having people there who could translate, which is why they hired Toussaint Leoberture in the first place when they ran into him. And then, uh, having his wife, who was even better than he was when it came to translation, really made it possible for this to be a successful expedition. Without them, uh, very likely, one of those tribes would have gotten into a negative, you know, reaction to them and probably would have wiped them out because they, they, they were not, you know, strong enough to take on a tribe. But does that answer your question?
So you said, next time they would send out like a more heavily military force? Do you think that would make natives see them as more of a threat than negotiators and then they're just getting a bunch more fights?
Absolutely. And just remember that they're in an area where natives had a relatively respectful relationship with Europeans. Because the French, out of the three various European groups, treated the Native Americans the best. And so they already had kind of a baseline. They had like this, this, this baseline of, you know, we get gifts from them, you know, to, to be their friends. And then they give us the opportunity to make even more money by giving them furs. And so there's this, um, this level of mutual respect that we kind of piggyback on as we go. And so the fact that, um, uh, Charbonneau is part French is very important. Because that establishes this, this, you know, going back to, you know, how the French did things, which allowed them to kind of, you know, negotiate past. Because the Sioux are so aggressive that they would basically be, you know, someone that, um, you, like, we could very easily get into a, a, a conflict with. And had they gotten into a conflict with a Sioux, they for sure would have been wiped out. Like there's, there, they would have had no chance. Uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Would it be reasonable to say that if the Lewis and Clark expedition was unsuccessful and the Sioux wiped them out, that because they would send more military forces through, that conflict similar to how the later eighteen hundreds would happen then? And since the US Army wouldn't be as strong, we could not be able to have laid a claim to the Louisiana Territory?
Right, yeah. On, on white men's maps, we would have had the claim, but on, like, in reality, we would have had no way of like even having any claim at all. They could have formed a giant coalition. Um, I apologize for the dogs barking, uh, but we would have had like a giant coalition of Native Americans that we would have had to fight in the West. And I'm telling you, that will eventually happen. And it's like after the Civil War, and our battle-tested army from after the Civil War will get beaten by the Great Plains tribes. That's how amazing they are as warriors. Remember how we talked about like them on horseback, hunting the buffalo? And with like bows and arrows and later guns? And just like, like those hunting skills translated over to military skills really, really well. Uh, so, um, definitely very, very kind of important. Uh, so I saw some hands, but they disappeared. So that is the Lewis and Clark expedition, which successfully returns. Um, and by the way, uh, later on, Meriwether Lewis is going to try to get back to DC. And he'll be traveling through the middle of Tennessee and he'll get murdered. Um, and there's like a whole little historical mystery over, around the murder of Meriwether Lewis. Uh, you know, and like the accounts of how he got shot in the head and, and, and what exactly took place there. There's kind of a, a neat little aside in history that if you're interested, I didn't, you know, it wasn't one of those things that we, we would have a slide on, but I just, you know, wanted to throw that out there. If you're interested, you can look it up later. And, and I've, I've watched some interesting, you know, History Channel shows on them exploring the various, you know, theories as to why he died. So, um, that's, uh, the Lewis and Clark expedition. And that takes us to the entry of the state of Ohio. So, um, as more and more, um, uh, uh, people move into the Ohio River Valley, we continue to have very tragic, um, uh, misunderstandings and, um, which lead to violence with the native tribes. So, um, there's the Nat Hooton massacre in seventeen eighty-two, where over a hundred Christianized Indians were killed by frontiersmen. Um, and then Native Americans, um, had, that, that had actually led to the battle that we had already talked about in the Northwest Territory War. Um, until, you know, the Native Americans were on a rampage under Little Turtle and Blue Jacket until the Battle of Fallen Timbers, which opened the territory up to settlement. Uh, but there continued to be other, um, uh, you know, conflicts between Native Americans and Americans. Because Americans are coming in and basically wanting territory. Like they, they want, you know, and so this is something that, you know, is going to obviously cause conflict because Native Americans don't want to give up that much. And so, um, uh, it, 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 it basically, you know, there's like this one, there's another, like, I know there, we talked about the Enoch Brown School massacre, but there's another one, that was in Pennsylvania, but there's another one in Ohio, which is, which is really tragic. Um, but, uh, as more and more people begin to kind of pour into this area, um, uh, they began to actually, uh, uh, start the process of applying for statehood when they only had forty-five thousand people, even though really you were supposed to have sixty thousand. Uh, and the Congress, which was kind of eager to, um, get more of these territories out west, recognized as, as like actual states, uh, was able to, um, uh, kind of start the process. Now, they do reach the sixty thousand per, person threshold by the time the process is complete. But in eighteen oh two, after submitting a state constitution to Congress, Ohio enters the Union as the seventeenth state and as a free state. Now, um, we've talked about this before, but there's, in the House of Representatives, like southerners are always gonna be outvoted. So, um, whenever a, like, what is the one House of Congress where they hope to be able to block any anti-slavery stuff? Yes, Zach? The Senate. So they have to maintain a balance in the Senate. And so whenever a new state is, is admitted in the North, uh, as a free state, there has to be, um, uh, other states admitted as slave states. So you'll see, uh, kind of how that all plays out in just a little bit. But before we get to that, we have a, um, a slide, which I believe, uh-
It is mine.
All right, and, uh, let me see here. Yes, that, Kenzie. So Eileen, yeah, okay, so Eileen doesn't have this one, you have this one, right? Okay, so, go ahead, and I'll only jump in occasionally, but go ahead and tell us the story. By the way, anybody, before this story starts, why would Aaron Burr have a bone to pick with Alexander Hamilton? From what we've talked about. Um, uh, Faith, go ahead.
It was because Hamilton published all of those essays talking about, yeah, Burr kinda sucks, you shouldn't vote for him. And then Burr lost because of that. Sorry, that was my bird making.
Yes, and, uh, Ethan, what were you gonna add to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say Burr was already very close to being president and Hamilton may have been the deciding factor that basically made him not president.
Right, okay, so that causes, uh, a, a sour relationship to develop. So Kenzie, go ahead and pick up from there. And, uh, tell us the story.
So Aaron Burr and Alexander Hamilton have been longtime political enemies. There are a lot of events that have caused anger between the two, such as when Burr captured the US Senate seat from his father-in-law, Philip Skyler. When Burr published a document against John Adams, a Federalist, and we, excuse me, and when Hamilton launched a public attack on Burr during the seventeen ninety-six election, saying, "I feel it is a religious duty to oppose his career." John Adams won instead of Jefferson and Burr in that situation. The real tipping point was in the election of eighteen hundred, a tied vote between Jefferson and Burr occurred. Hamilton turned some of his Federalist party to Jefferson, who were for Burr, causing Jefferson to win presidency. Keep in mind, like we mentioned earlier, Jefferson and Hamilton had fought back and forth, so this is crazy. After the election, Burr never forgot what Hamilton did. They began throwing insults publicly back and forth in eighteen oh four. Letters back and forth detailed their anger. Burr's honor had been injured and he was out for Hamilton. Burr challenged Hamilton to a duel. That's just like before.
Can I stop you for a second? So at this time in history, um, if someone, if someone damaged your quote-unquote honor, um, if they, if they hurt your reputation, you didn't sue them like you do nowadays, like in court, for like libel or slander as much as you just decided it with violence in a duel. So when things get to a certain point between two people, they just go out into the woods and they draw guns and they shoot each other. And there was like a whole set of rules as to how you're supposed to do that. Yeah, Faith, what were you gonna say?
Yes. Uh, I was just gonna say, back then duels weren't even for the purpose of, um, killing the other person. It was just kind of a formality of, uh, sorry, my birds are being loud. Uh, it was mostly just a formality of, um, the honor, like you were talking about. You didn't go into a duel necessarily to kill somebody. It was just, uh, a sake of honor or something, it was your honor on the line.
Yeah, cause you could literally point one of the pistols at somebody and the, the bullets were so inaccurate that came out of those pistols because they're just like, you know, a ball, um, that, that, you know, that, that, the bullet, this just wildly inaccurate a lot of the time. That, um-
Can I, uh, add something real quick?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll stop and I'll let you continue. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so just a little thing about these duels. Typically, I saw in my research that whenever-
Oh, you're cutting out.
There would be a vice president.
Your, your, your internet, I don't know if it's, it's good.
That's what I saw when I was researching.
Yeah, can you, can you restate that? Because like you cut out, so we couldn't hear what you were saying.
Yes. So typically, when there would be, you know, the second place who got vice president and the first place who got president, the vice president would typically go out and have the duel. That's what I saw in my research.
Okay.
Well, that's just a little tidbit there.
All right. Well, and just so you know, people weren't as afraid of dying in these duels as, as you would normally be nowadays. Like if you, but if you went out into the forest nowadays and you both had guns and you shot at each other, there'd be a very real chance of dying. But because the bullets that came out were so wildly inaccurate, just because of the way the guns were designed back then, um, you would have two people like firing at each other and the bullets, not, neither one would get hit. And then they would fire at each other again and neither one would get hit. And then like somebody would get like a flesh wound or would get like, uh, um, you know, like a, a wound in it, in a non-lethal area. And then would say, okay, okay, you win. And that would kind of decide things between the two people. Um, but sometimes people did die, uh, so there was that chance. So, um, just something important to keep in mind as we talk about, like, the two of them deciding to go out and resolve their differences with a duel. Because, you know, it's like, you don't want someone, you don't want everybody calling you a coward, you know? Like that would have destroyed your reputation. So you had to, you had to go out and defend your honor, so to speak. So go ahead, Kenzie.
Exactly. So the duel. On July eleventh, eighteen oh four, Hamilton and Burr met on the dueling grounds at Weehawken, New Jersey. Of course, with duels, they would send their seconds to negotiate a peace, and if that couldn't happen, then they would continue with the duel. In this case, the seconds were Hamilton's was Nathaniel Pendleton. He was a Revolutionary War veteran and Georgia District Court Judge. And Burr's was William P. Van Ness, a New York City federal judge. They met together to negotiate a peace, but ultimately could not. The duel took place that morning. It was really early, as of what I've heard. Ironically, it was near the same spot. Hamilton's son had died defending his honor. Burr and Hamilton each fired a shot from a point-five-six caliber dueling pistol. Burr was unscathed and Hamilton had been struck in the torso, piercing his liver and spine. Alexander Hamilton unfortunately died the next day. Vice President Burr was then convicted of murder, but fled to his relatives in South Carolina.
All right, hold, hold on a second. So he was indicted for murder in New Jersey and New York. So get how important this is. We have a sitting vice president who actually shot and killed another person. And again, uh, duels do, uh, cause you to run the risk of actually being convicted of murder because they were not considered a legal way to remedy, uh, a, a dispute. So you, you ran that risk. So we have a sitting vice president who is now on the run from the law. He's, he's, he's the vice president and he's killed somebody and he's being, he's been indicted for murder, uh, in New York and New Jersey. Um, so he flees to the South to his, to, to his relatives, uh, in order to, uh, escape, um, justice. He's a fugitive from justice. Uh, I, I just, I find that, you know, just kind of hilarious, uh, in terms of, you know, how we see things today. But, um, go ahead, Mackenzie.
So anyway, he fled to his relatives in North, uh, excuse me, South Carolina. And his charges were eventually dropped because he had a powerful friend. And then he returned to Philadelphia to resume his vice presidency, but was politically scarred from this. Because being charged with murder and being in a position of power that big would, like, take down your reputation like a thousand notches. So-
Well, and not only that-
It wasn't good for him.
Not only that, who had he killed?
He had killed the Secretary of State.
Um, well, he had killed Alexander Hamilton, you know, like the founding father, a man who was revered for his, you know, his influence in establishing the United States as a legitimate power, uh, and, and establishing the federal government as, as a strong central government. So, I mean, he had, he had really, you know, messed up. Now, Alexander Hamilton was not the Secretary of State. He was the former Secretary-
Yeah, I was gonna say Treasury.
Secretary of State was James Madison, yeah. But, um, but yeah, so-
Yeah.
He killed one of the, one of the leading lights of America. Like, so he is politically radioactive at this point. Yes, um, go ahead, Olivia.
I just have a question. Who actually started this? Was it the vice president or Hamilton or both?
Yes, Burr was the one who initially offered the duel.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Hamilton couldn't, you know, have everybody be snickering and calling him a coward. So when someone offers you a duel, you, you, you have two choices. You can either go out and accept it and run the risk of possibly dying. Or you could have everybody like laughing at you because you're a coward. Uh, so, um, he had to accept in order to defend his honor. Uh, but like Kenzie said, you know, this had been a, this, while often this doesn't lead to tragic results, it had led to a tragic result for his son. Um, so, uh, excellent job, uh-
Oh, I have a little bit extra.
Go ahead.
So like I said earlier, this is just like a little extra tidbit. Uh, Hamilton and his Federalists, uh, excuse me, Hamilton told his Federalists to vote Jefferson because, and I quote, "by far not so dangerous as a man." He was not, sorry. And then my quote, this is, um, after he had gotten shot and he was on his way to be taken care of. He said, um, "Let Mrs. Hamilton be immediately sent for. Let the event be gradually broken to her, but given her hopes." He then continued, "I have no ill will against Col- Colonel Burr. I met him with a fixed resolution to do him no harm. I forgive all that happened."
Okay, so he, he died in a, in a, in a, in kind of a, um, a state where he, you know, he had let go of his, his earlier hatred for Burr. A state where he, you know, he had let go of his, his earlier hatred for uh Burr. Um i- i- you considered it an honorable death, um Faith, what were you gonna say, you have your hand up?
I don't know if Kenzie mentioned this, but didn't Hamilton actually raise his pistol at this guy, he didn't even aim for Aaron Burr, he like ended up hitting a tree branch or something like that? He didn't even wanna hit him because he was worried about killing him cuz they were formerly friends.
Well, also, what's the other problem if he kills Burr? What is Burr?
He's the vice president, so if he kills the vice president, that would not be good.
That might be a little small problem there, you know, if you kill the sitting vice president of the United States. So yeah, I mean Burr, Hamilton's out there to go through the motions, so he doesn't get called a coward. Uh but Burr is, is, is angry, Burr, Burr remembers, you know, like how he could have been president. But did, you know, Hamilton is the one that that screwed it all up for him, you know, uh so. Yeah.
Oh, and one more thing, it's very small, so it's not that much, um but his last words, there were two sources that I found that said different things. One source said that his last words were, um remember my Eliza, you are a Christian. Which is to his wife, and another source says that they were, I have a tender reliance on the mercy of the Almighty through the men's. Uh excuse me, merits of the Lord Jesus Christ, I am the sinner, I look to him for mercy, pray for me. And I also saw in this article that I read that they said he would not shut up, like he continued to talk. Up until basically he died.
Yep, uh that excellent, um and Olivia, what were you gonna say?
Sorry, I'm just kinda confused, like could this whole thing have been avoided if Hamilton just said no to the duel?
Uh yes, but what would that have done to his reputation?
It wouldn't have been good, but to me, that, I don't know, I'm just confused cuz he wasn't even gonna shoot him, it sounded like.
Right, I mean, honestly, uh i- i- it was, you know, a rather needless death for one of our great founding fathers. Um but uh, yeah, he could have avoided it and survived, but his reputation would have been destroyed, uh Ethan, what were you gonna say?
It seems this whole situation is just something ridiculous that basically two people in very important. Positions of government basically had a chance of killing each other and that why did this happen in the first place?
Right, you know, it's like, you know, when, well, the people nowadays, you know, they like might get into a fight, you know, like they might solve their problems by like. You know, punching each other, but you know, like uh you're gonna survive, even if you lose the fight, you're gonna survive.
It could have just gone bad no matter what happened.
Right, I mean.
Only if they both happen to miss would be the best situation.
Yeah, it was kind of a petty situation between the both of them.
Yeah, but I mean, I, i- and it's just so like, we, we just don't understand how important. Like a, a person's honor was to them back at that time, like your reputation, your honor as a gentleman. Um was everything, like if, if, uh if you weren't consider, if you were considered a coward, if you, if you got a bad reputation. It closed all kinds of doors, like the, the, i- it was very important. Cuz it, cuz we were a country where men considered themselves relatively equal. So um you know, you had to have some standing among your fellow men, which, which was part of this, this, you know, whole. Honor, reputation thing, so uh yes, it's a tragic way to lose one of the great founding fathers and of course. Um our sitting vice president ends up, you know, becoming a murderer uh as a result of this, but uh that is the Hamilton Burr duel. And as uh this is kind of goes along with the whole election of eighteen hundred, as our founding fathers had realized. That um the whole, you know, situation in seventeen ninety-six, which had led to, you know. Uh a vice president, Thomas Jefferson, um going against a, a sitting president, John Adams. When, you know, the Alien and Sedition Acts were opposed by the Virginia and Kentucky Resolutions. And then the even further, you know, disruptive, uh you know, impact of. Uh you know, the whole uh um election of eighteen hundred, that obviously the Electoral College system. That had been put in place had to be changed, they had to fix it. And so um the Twelfth Amendment basically changes it, so the president and the vice president run together. On a ticket, okay, and um so they, they both um. You, when you, when you vote, you, you basically are casting a vote for both the president and the vice president. Uh and and so uh there's, you know, it's, it's first place for a ticket. And of course, this is enshrining, oh, sorry, another alarm. Um this is enshrining what we call the two-party system, which is where um effectively. You know, we're saying, okay, yes, we recognize that we have parties, like before the, our founding fathers were in denial, they're like, no, we're not gonna have. Factions, we're not gonna have parties, we're not gonna let what happened over in France happen to us, you know, with the Gerondis and the Jacobins. And the Jacobins kind of taking the revolution over the cliff, so to speak, we're not gonna let that happen, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna maintain. Independence and everybody's gonna be an independent free thinker, but it, it just didn't work out, like, that's a natural part of, of politics in a democracy. Is you're gonna, you're gonna have parties form, and so this is in effect going to create a two-party system because. Um y- you have to have enough of a coalition to be able to get over fifty percent of the vote. Um and so. We won't ever have a situation again like we had in eighteen hundred where um, you know, there's a tie between the president and the vice president and then it has to be broken. So that's the Twelfth Amendment, which gets added to the Constitution. And that takes us to the next election, the campaign of eighteen oh four. Now notice who is not on the ticket anymore, anybody, who's not there? Yes, Ethan.
John Adams.
Well, no, I mean, John Adams isn't running again, but who else?
Oh, Amber.
Aaron Burr, yeah. Aaron Burr has been dropped from the uh Democratic Republican ticket. Um and so we're gonna actually have a slide on, on what happens with Aaron Burr uh in just a bit. But um uh this, you know, is kind of the campaign of eighteen oh four and um. Uh the Federalists realized that the public and uh, you know, the public then kind of putting pressure on state legislatures. And state legislatures are picking electors who were going to either vote one way or the other. That was essentially um going to um make it so. They didn't have much of a chance of winning, you know, the, the Louisiana Purchase was making the um, the Democratic Republicans very popular. So um they really despaired of being able to beat Jefferson, but they agreed to support Charles Coatsworth Pinckney. You may remember him from uh the XYZ affair, he was one of our uh ambassadors over there, the one who would send. You know, millions for defense but not one penny for tribute uh kind of thing. Um and uh they began uh going negative on Jefferson again. Uh and this time they really went into the Sally Hemings thing, uh and uh the, you know, kind of, so when historians. Uh are, you know, aware of that, the reason that they're aware of the whole Sally Hemings thing is because of the dirt digging. By the Federalists who were looking for a way to try to damage Jefferson politically. Um and some Federalists uh got together and talked about leaving. Uh the Union and forming a separate country in what was known as the Essex Junto. Uh so that, of course, is when news of that gets out, it's gonna make the Federalists even more unpopular than they already are. Um meanwhile, uh Jefferson had, you know, a number of successes under his belt. Uh he had replaced Aaron Burr with George Clinton, he um basically had uh rolled back taxes. Which was very popular, uh he had a success, he had basically been making a successful war on the Barbary Pirates. Which was gaining us international respect, he had made the Louisiana Purchase, which had doubled the size of our country. Uh and so really, the only negative was the whole Burr thing, uh and Burr had been dropped. Um so uh as a result, um you can see here in the election of eighteen oh four. That it is an absolute landslide in favor of Thomas Jefferson. And people at this point began to talk about, well, can we legitimately expect? That the Federalists will ever win another election, um and so there was some talk about whether the uh Federalist Party would even survive. Uh because of how popular Jefferson was, and so. We need to talk about Aaron Burr, uh and Valencia, I see that you're here. Um do you wanna do the, the, the Burr conspiracy? Valencia?
Uh yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I have it.
Okay. Alright. I try not to interrupt too much, but this is a funny story.
Yeah, overall, it was a plot alleged to be uh to have been conjured up by Aaron Burr. Between eighteen oh four and eighteen oh seven during and after his term as VP. So he was already wanted for murder uh in New Jersey and New York uh for Hamilton. And uh he was in Philadelphia and his goal was to take over the western part of America. Pretty much. Yeah, and.
So I, I just find this hilarious, so this guy really is a complete and total power-hungry scumbag who doesn't care about the republic at all. All he cares about is himself, because, I mean, look, he's literally, now that he has been politically damaged and is quote politically radioactive. He decides to betray our country, he's committing treason here, he's saying, I want to try to break away these western territories. And form a new nation against the United States, which is just crazy, but go ahead, tell us about um the whole thing.
So his main reasons were that the land was mostly unsettled. And the borders were disputed by Spain and many of their residents were already talking about secession. And uh Burr wanted to take this land for himself and build his own empire because he had no chance of being president or vice president. Of the Union since he murdered Hamilton. And uh he used his external connections to people in like Britain and other parts of Europe. To gain support to attempt to establish an independent country in southwestern America and part of Mexico.
Yeah. Um di- do you have anything on Harmon Blenner Hasset, which is kind of before he gets down there, he, he, he kind of. Um gets a, a little revolution going with him, do you have anything on that?
Uh I saw the name, but I kind of ignored it and didn't do much research on it.
Okay, let me just, that's a little aside story before we get down to the main event, which is what you're talking about. Um so as, so first, he basically contacts the British Ambassador Anthony Mary and says, hey, how would you like to um. Uh add the Ohio River Valley and the Louisiana Territory to your country, you know, and, and regain some, some uh. You know, and, and Mary is um uh, you, you know, he's like, I'll lead the revolt. And Mary's kind of unsure if this guy is actually gonna be able to pull this off, uh but he sails down the Ohio River and he ends up meeting. Harmon Blenner Hasset, who has a island that he owns in the middle of the Ohio River. Um and he's kind of this rich recluse and uh Blenner Hasset is, he, the two of them break a friendship. And they basically um start this whole, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna get their own private army going. So they began storing up arms and recruiting men, but a local militia uh basically um foils the whole thing. Uh uh I think it was a guy named Joe Davies from uh Kentucky that, that raids the island. And um basically puts an end to Blenner Hasset's little army that he was creating for Burr. But Burr escapes and basically heads south uh to the Mississippi River. Um and that's where we'll pick up, so Valencia, tell us what happens once he gets down there, cuz he needs, he needs allies, he needs people. So who is his other big ally uh that he contacts, you know, after the whole Blenner Hasset thing doesn't work out?
Well, I know, oh, hold on, I know he contacted James Wilkinson.
Okay, that's who it is, and James Wilkinson is actually betraying our country. He is the governor of Louisiana Territory, he's, he's in the military, he's a general. But he has been spying for what country for a long time? What country has he been serving as a spy for? It, it's Spain, Spain who wants this territory back and has a lot of, you know, residents in there. Who are kind of interested in secession, they, you know, they're using James Wilkinson as a spy. So when Burr approaches him and tries to get him to join up. Um and, and basically, you know, because Burr is aware that Wilkinson has these divided loyalties. What does Wilkins, what is Wilkinson's reaction?
He uh betrayed him and then uh Jefferson uh arrested Burr.
Yeah, so, so Burr basically um, you know, approaches him and Wilkinson's like, you're gonna blow my cover, don't, you know, don't, no, no. And then so he finally is just like, no, he refuses and tries to kind of, you know, establish how loyal he is to the United States by refusing Burr. And Burr is by himself, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a lunatic mission at this point, there's no way it's actually gonna work. So it's, it's not a hard call for Wilkinson, uh but um Wilkinson, remember, is still a spy for the Spanish. Um and trying to conceal that and keep that, keep people from finding out. So Jefferson has him arrested and he's brought up on charges of treason, what's the penalty for treason? Anyone, what's the penalty?
Jeff.
Yes, and by the way, we will be ending with this slide here, so as soon as we're finished, we'll be done, but um. Uh what happens in the trial, because this is really interesting, because John Marshall, a Federalist, remember, a, a former Federalist. Who would be angry that um Alexander Hamilton had died at the hands of this man and now has that chance. To render a decision um to uh execute the former vice president, what does he do instead? In this trial?
There, there wasn't a lot of evidence, so he was set free.
Yeah, the, the, the actual reading of the statute is that there, that it must, that it must be upon. And this, I think this is actually in the Constitution itself, um that it must be treason must be upon the affirmation of two witnesses. And since the government couldn't produce two witnesses, um they go with like, even though they had lots of public support. And, you know, there was a decent amount of evidence, actually, um of Burr's, you know, intent to betray the United States. Because they didn't have two witnesses. Um it, Marshall goes with a very literal and, and strict interpretation here and he says, well, we don't have what we need. So therefore, um you are acquitted and he is acquitted, so he doesn't have to, you know, face uh death. Uh for what he has done, and do you have anything on what happens to Burr after this?
Uh didn't he go back to Britain?
He did, he went to Britain for a while, um you know, his career is kind of destroyed, he's no longer, you know, like a person of prominence anywhere. And then he actually changes his name and comes back to the United States when he's old. Um and kind of, you know, he ends up dying here in the US but under, under a different name. Um later on in his life, so um yeah. What a wacko, I mean, uh you know, this guy, uh Alexander Hamilton was right about him. Like all he cared about was his own, you know, political career, so to speak, uh did you have anything else that you wanted to add, Valencia?
Uh I don't have anything else.
Alright, great, alright, so we are done for the day, guys, and thanks everyone for uh your attention and your attendance. And uh we will pick up with uh the Pike Expedition when we return um to class on Monday. Alright, see you all then, and I am now ending our meeting.